So, that brings us to our regular business meeting. I need a motion to add an addendum, addenda to item D2, the personnel report. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Now, if we could all rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, we have no public comments tonight. Brings us to the finance report. Mr. Beckles.
Good evening. You have before you the financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2017. I would say that yes, the June is our year end, but these statements that you have are preliminary. We have not finished the complete close of our June books yet. So, these are preliminary numbers. As far as the revenues are concerned, I don't expect the revenue numbers to change significantly at all. And there are no major items I need to bring to your attention as far as the revenues are concerned. No issues with those. If we return though to the expenses, the expenses are not complete. We do not have the medical claims in yet, and that's a major piece. That's not, so when you see that $1.9 million available budget balance, that's not the fund balance at this point. So, that has to be adjusted. You would note on page, that's page 10, there are a few negative numbers there. Under instruction, classroom instruction, you see a negative number under other of That's because the lower, but lower expenses exceeded their budget by about $350,000, so that created that negative number there. I'm not too concerned about it from a total instruction perspective, because as you can see on the bottom, that we still have, for a division perspective, a functional perspective, it's still positive. There's nothing we could do really with that overage at this point. Fortunately, it was able to be eaten up by the available funds and other accounts. But that was the main reason for that. The other payroll accounts, one of the things, if you remember me telling you, the way our system works with the incumbents for the VRS, for the 11, when people, it normally takes out 12, but it should only be 11, and then we have to reverse it coming the last month. But that causes some little bit of angst, because we don't know where that credit is going to be back. So, some of the negatives you see in here wouldn't show up until such time as that entry is made. Fortunately, we kind of buffer our expenses to watch that. But, so, again, these negative numbers, I'm not too concerned about it as a whole. But that's what created some of those as a result. But some of it, that one over, subs caused that one in the $44,000. And then, as you know, we had a principal at one of our schools that earlier this year had to leave. Well, we had to have a substitute principal in, so that created some of the, and that $37,000 that you see there. If you go down to transportation, you can see $81,000 in the personnel. If you look over on the revenue side, their transportation billings were up. So, that's offset by this negative side here, because most of that overtime was related to the transportation revenue that they created on the revenue side. You only see it separated here as opposed to a net number. So, there's no concern with that. And the $12,000 is the fuel, is over a little bit, but we knew that was going to be a little bit. Fuel prices went up during the year. So, that's the reason for those negative numbers there. If you turn the page, on the last page, you will see a few negative in technology. Out of that $10,000, $7,400 there is going to be reversed, because that's a prepaid. So, that's going to be adjusted when we finish our year-end numbers. And part of the software number of $140,000 that you see, that $81,000 negative number, that's included in $140,000 that's going to be in prepaid. So, those will be adjusted in our final numbers. So, I just wanted to explain those negative numbers that you see, but I'm not concerned about those. When we finish our final adjustments, some of those will go away. So, all in all, I don't have any significant issues to bring to your attention as far as our year-end numbers. It will be positive. It won't be in excess of $1 million dollars, I think, pretty Satan on that one, but it's not negative and it's not zero, which is a good thing. I would remind the board, though, my recommendation is going to be to take whatever fund balance we have and put it back towards the health reserve. That's going to offset and relieve the pressure of us having to increase the health insurance in employees next year, which I know we don't want to do, but at the same time, if the reserve isn't high enough, I'm not going to have any choice. So, all the fund balance amount that I'm going to recommend go towards the health reserve balance.
Questions or comments? Could you, Ms. Morrison?
I'm sorry. Expenses at law, they went over their budget. Do we have their budget for this year so that we are able to?
We have, well, let's, I'll mention it, yes.
Okay.
A short answer to your questions, yes. I'll make a note of that when we get to the other three agenda items as far as fiscal agents' budget when we get there.
Well, and I was going to ask a similar question on the overage, and is there a way to anticipate that or control it? And, I mean, Laurel's a regional program. Is that overage all on us?
We have addressed with them the problem that created this situation. Let's put it that way. So, I'm pretty sure that if they took advice and made the correction, we wouldn't see this particular problem again. It was a problem in the way they calculated their budget. They made an error in the calculation.
Okay.
They pointed out the error, so we don't, we shouldn't see that happening again.
Okay. Ms. Carter?
Well, I know that the leader there makes, really works hard to stay within that budget. So, I was, that surprised me to see the overage. Okay, so it was a calculation error.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. No other questions. We'll move on to the consent agenda. That includes the school board meeting minutes from the July 11th, reorganizational meeting and work session, as well as the July 26 closed meeting, personnel report and addenda, the Virginia Governor's School for Science and Technology 2016-17 budget, accelerate Governor STEM Academy 2016-17 budget, the Laurel Regional School 2016-17 budget, and Pauline F. Maloney Steps with Links Program 2016-17 budget. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. And it brings us to school board committee reports. I think Dr. Coleman.
Mr. Chair, briefly, just wanted the board to know that through Ethel Reeve's office, our working with Dr. Massey, Pledge of the Chair, then the school program is, is in motion for the first day of school with about 200 men prepared to volunteer.
Any other reports? Okay, so that brings us to unfinished business. First is F1, election of the vice chair of the school board for 2017-18. In accordance with section 221-76 of the Code of Virginia, the school board reorganizes for the 2017-18 school year. Reorganization requires selection of a vice chair of the school board for 2017-18. So, the floor is now open for nominations. Ms. Morrison.
I would like to recommend that the school board elect Dr. Coleman for the school board vice chair for the 2017-18 school year.
Okay. Are there any additional nominations? Okay. Need a motion to close the floor to nominations at this point?
I move that we close the floor to nominations at this point.
Okay. There are second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, Dr. Coleman is nominee, has been nominated for the vice chair. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. Thank you. Brings us to F2. This is Dr. Massey, I believe, or Mr. McLean. The policy guidelines for community resource persons, school volunteers.
Actually, I'm asking Ben Copeland to present that.
Okay. And this is for information tonight.
Good evening, everyone. So, let me bring to you the update on our policy IICBR related to school volunteers. What you have in your board book tonight is an update to the document that you approved back on May the 2nd. So, let me explain a little bit about that. This afternoon, I went through the document that you approved on May the 2nd, which was the volunteer policy as we referred to it at that. Every element and paragraph of that policy is in what is in your board book. So, I will go through and highlight specific parts of that. There is a fair amount of additional other wording that's in there, and I will go through that also. So, if you would turn to page 57 of your board book or your electronic board book, and I'll kind of take a paragraph-by-paragraph approach. I figured that was the best way to highlight what the new components are of the policy. Looking at the first paragraph, all the new words in that paragraph are highlighted in red. The two central components of that are that we're providing a designee for the principal to be the management supervision, and some buildings that might have assistant principals, they might defer it to the guidance counselor, but whoever the principal might designate. And then, the last sentence is there, that the school service volunteer, really by the statement that's included there, where it's a non-employee or a teacher, means it is somebody that's in the front office. You know, if you think about a small elementary school, if it wasn't the principal that was doing it, it could be a secretary, it could be the guidance counselor, whereas at a large high school or middle school, it could be an assistant principal or someone else. Moving on to the second paragraph, everything that's in that paragraph, this is another paragraph that includes everything from the previous policy, and all of the new additions are the stuff that's in red. The first inclusion there about college students that are coming to Lynchburg City Schools, a lot of those that we're talking about are college students that are coming to us from education departments, as they're working towards their education degrees, and we welcome them in for their practicum and field experiences in their student teaching. Others that might be coming in from colleges could be some of our partners. We have a very good support group at Liberty University's Athletic Department for IRS Payne. So, you'll see a lot of college students volunteering there, and they do it at other schools around the school division. The last part of that paragraph is kind of what Nora and I worked on, is what I would call an escape clause. So, that if you get a volunteer and they're just not working out, that the superintendent always has the right to say, "We thank you for your volunteering, but we no longer need you anymore." And that's why that paragraph is written the way it is, or the end of that paragraph is written the way it is. So, now we move down into the other components of the policy related to someone that wants to volunteer that might have a conviction of a felony or a misdemeanor. Those components that were in the original policy are in the first two sentences. After a legal review, the rest of that paragraph was added to cover charges related to child abuse or neglect. So, the child protective services component of folks that we thought was important to look at. And then, the part that if we do disqualify someone for a volunteer service, that they have a right to get a copy of that background check from the superintendent's office. Any questions up to this point? So, now, the policy transitions over to someone that might have been disqualified due to a background check as to the process that they need to go through to request an exception from the superintendent. And then, there are five specific items that are listed there. The first two were already components of the previous policy. And item number two there, highlighted in red, there was a recommendation from attorneys that we capture the definition of burglary, because it was not considered to be a barrier crime in that section of the code that we used. Then, the second addition in that portion of the policy is that the administration felt that should someone be disqualified from being a volunteer and that they seek an exception from the superintendent, that the principal should be involved in a review of that volunteer and their exception, and really have to say so whether or not they want them to volunteer in their school. The last thing I think we want to do is provide an exception from the superintendent's office and then force that volunteer on the school when they may not desire to have that person working in their school. So, that's the first page. Number five there was a component of the previous policy, that it, the superintendent has to make the determination on the threat and safety and welfare of students to grant that exception. The next page, which is page 58 of your board book, gets into some of those considerations and factors that were discussed. This is, I know this is the first time that you've seen many of these, but this was kind of where the meat of the, of the superintendent's decision on granting the exception comes from, related to the severity of the crime, the nature of the crime, whether it was violent and included a weapon. On number four, I would like to make a quick edit. If you look at the last four in that sentence, that should be just an or. So, for those that might have, be seeking an exception underneath some type of a previous drug conviction, looking at the nature of the controlled substances, and also whether or not that conviction was for use or for distribution. Of course, the number and age of convictions, whether or not that individual is still on probation at the timeframe they're requesting an exemption, and how they present as a role model for children, and then really the reason why an individual wants to volunteer. So, those are the factors that make up some of the thought process that the superintendent would go through to determine that, that we were going to grant an exception. I will just keep going.
Can I just clarify?
Yes, sir.
So, point number four is not changing the four. It's actually if a drug conviction, the nature of the controlled substance, and whether the conviction was, was for use or for distribution. Is the addition of or into that sentence?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the next paragraph below the eight enumerated items gets into some special considerations or restrictions that the superintendent will need to look at. Knowing that we have volunteers going all kinds of places, doing all kinds of things throughout a school year, it's important to know those that might be overnight trips or volunteering outside the classroom setting, lots of field trips, museum trips, Amazement Square here in town, all the way to Jamestown down towards the Tidewater area. So, things to think about as the superintendent goes through these considerations. I guess at that point, I'll stop and ask for questions. Everything, I think, from that point forward is part of the original policy. So, that's, this is the current state of it after much back and forth with legal reviews and trying to capture the essence of what the board desired, related to the superintendent being able to effectively evaluate and assess the risk of an individual that might come forward and request an exception.
Dr. Brennan?
So, first of all, Mr. Copeland and Dr. Massey, thank you so much for all the work that's gone into this very important policy. And as some board members may remember, several months ago, I was in the public section of this area, talking from the Equity Task Force about supporting this policy and hoping that the board would consider it, and we certainly appreciate the board doing that. And I wanted to make a couple of comments. I'll try to keep it under three minutes, like the public comments, but just sort of quickly to say that I think this is obviously a big deal, and as Dr. Massey has said before, we want to get this right, and for a couple of reasons. One is that, just to refresh people's memory, there's no other school district in the state that has a law like this, that most of them do not allow felons to volunteer. That what we're really trying to do is to try to, the goal of this is really to increase volunteerism for our community. That, I'm so glad that you revised the whole policy, so we're talking about an entire policy revision, because I think what we want to do is we want to encourage people to volunteer, whether they have a felony or not. We'd like to increase volunteerism. And also, I just want to say as a comment that, as Dr. Brayband said with his, his presentation, that this is not talking about what parents can do or not do in the school system who have felonies. I think people in the community don't understand that, that those individuals, parents who have felonies can participate in school programs. This is not blocking that or not commenting on that, they can still do that. We're talking about individuals who are not parents, who are not guardians, who want to volunteer in the schools, to participate in group activity and not individual activity. I think one of the things that we're hoping will come out of this is that, I'm using a non-legal term, which is low-level felons will be able to volunteer. And the, the term of barrier crimes, which, you know, are defined in, in the state law, and I have a copy of that if you like, but as Dr. Brayband says, really covers all violent crimes, covers guns, it probably doesn't cover burglary, which was added in, but it's pretty, you would look at that and say, you don't want someone like that to volunteer. I think it's pretty clear. But I think the other issue is that we also want to allow people to volunteer who, who the principal wants to have in the school, who have low-level felonies. And, and I'm coming, coming around to one question, which I'll leave you with in a minute, which is that what's the role of drug use and/or distribution is? Because the concern, I think, in the community is that what's happened over the last 10 or 15 years is that the increase in incarceration among minority group has been primarily due to drug use. And it's been an inequitable distribution of the, of the penalty. So, there are a lot of individuals who have had low, who have had drug use period of marijuana or what now is considered not to be a dangerous substance, who has been incarcerated and has a felony. And I hope that, I guess I would ask for clarification in a minute, Mr. Copeland, if I could, about number four. I'm not sure what that means, that if it means that if someone does have a felony due to marijuana use, that they would be excluded? Or does that mean that that's an aspect that the principal and the superintendent will look at? If I could leave that with you just for a minute. And then, my other, my other question is that, and again, this is a, I don't understand the legality of it, but in, in the bottom of page 59, item number one, that the disqualifying conviction occurred more than five years before the date, before the date the exception is sought. I think the idea was that we wanted to have people in the community out of jail for at least five years to prove that they were following the law, that they were not doing things that would go back to jail. But does this say that it would be five years from when they're convicted? So, that if they then went to jail for, say, five years, that when they came out, they would be? Because I think that's not the spirit of what we're looking for, I would suspect. So, I'll leave you with those two questions. And then, my final comment is that, when we talked about this before, and as I said before, there's not a school district in the state that has this, but there is a school district in North Carolina that has their volunteer policy, which is, allows felons to participate in volunteer activities. And I have a copy of this, and I'm glad to ask Ms. Sullivan to pass this around before we have our final vote. But essentially, what it does, it says that every applicant must undergo a national sex offender registry check. Registered sex offenders will not be allowed to volunteer, period. That's sort of a separate item. And then, they list about 14 different things that you can, that you cannot have a felony for, that excludes you from volunteering. And there are things like murder, conspiracy or solicitation to commit murder, rape, kidnapping, abduction of children, crime against nature, incest, things, again, that are kind of the barrier crime category, I think we'd all agree upon. But they don't have drug use or distribution in that as one of the excluding factors. And I think, I assume it's sort of for the reason that we've talked about before. This had, this, this policy was last reviewed in 2000, September of 2013 by this district and is now, is on their website currently, so I assume it's active. The Equity Task Force had asked before if this district could be contacted to see what their experience is, so we would know. How has it worked? I tried to call back when I was Equity Task Force, and I can never get you to return a phone call to me, but I'm sure someone with more authority would be able to do that. It'd be nice to know what is the experience that these, these people have had. So, I think I end with, with those comments, but again, going back to the beginning, I think it's great that we're revising the entire policy. I think we want the schools to be safe for our children. We want to increase volunteers in the community, and we want to allow people to be mentors so that we really can have every name, every child by name, by need, by graduation, no matter who that mentor would be, if they qualified for it. Sorry, it took a little more than three minutes.
There's a couple of things that I can address with that. Your specific, your first one's specific to drug use versus distribution.
Yeah.
And that's why I think this one is worded in such a way that it talks about what the substance is, and then whether it is for use or for distribution. And I believe that, that we would want to look very differently on somebody that has a felony for distributing cocaine versus somebody that has a felony for using cocaine. So, that's why that it's written in such a way, so that the superintendent can look at what the substance is that's involved in the felony, and then the manner in which it's being used. So, that's the way the wording came out that way. On the second piece related to the five years, I'm going to have to defer to those that came up with the five years, and that would be the nine of you, as to whether that wording meets your intent or not. And then, I will pass that back to Nora Dunn so that she can take a look at it. And relative to that specific school division in North Carolina, a couple of things I would like to highlight is the state of North Carolina has different laws than the state of Virginia. And we also reached out to that school division, and we got nothing back from them, even reaching out directly to their director of personnel. We talked to their entity that manages this for them, and it's somewhat of a unique relationship in that their chamber of commerce manages those background checks, and they have some system in place where everybody that's in their database gets a nightly update check. We didn't get into the details. We talked to the lady with the chamber of commerce and about how they do all of that, and whatever gets spit out of the system goes to the school division and they deal with it. So, I can't provide much comment beyond that. We did reach out to them, but they never called us back.
Well, this may feel a little better, because that's as far as I got, too. I know I'm in good company. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I was of the opinion that the will of the board was five years upon their release from prison, which gives us ample time to, to see how the person is transformed into acceptability in society. And I think that I would like to go on record as stating that I believe that this board has exemplified the greatest of character to, to get us to five. I know there are others who would like to see it less than, but I think that we have done an incredible job to present five years over against the 15. And as a part of clarification, when would this policy go into effect, Mr. Chair, and when would the superintendent? Because the start of school is August the 14th. We don't meet until Tuesday, and it's fine, but it appears that we're still in the process of making the final determinations of this policy.
It goes into effect when we approve it.
Okay.
I don't know that the administration- I don't know that the administration needs any startup to try to implement it.
The background system is on and operating as of today for this school year. So, yeah, if, once the board approves it, then it's the nature of the person giving the letter saying that you're denied because of something in your background, and then it would be informed of the policy and the process would start.
It sounds like there is a question on the five-year, when that, I'll call it clock, I'm not sure what the exact right wording might be. Maybe we can get some suggestions from the attorneys as to how to phrase that.
Definitely.
Because that's...
So, the goal's direction is the five-year clock starts from the end of whatever the punishment phase from the conviction laws.
Yeah.
That's what I understood.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, yes, but this is the way we approved it, the way it is now, so we're going to need to amend it somehow. But we need, we need some, we need the right words to do that. So, I'm not comfortable trying to wordsmith this particular policy.
So, we'll have that written for you next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And we can, we should be able to amend it and approve it at that time, or you could present a proposed...
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. If there's, I should, are there any other questions? I'm not trying to cut things off, so.
All right.
Very good. Thank you. It's a lot of work that went into this.
Thank you. That went a lot easier than I thought it would.
Well, yeah, it's clear there's a lot of time and effort, and appreciate the input and hard work from administration and the attorneys on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, that brings us to item number three, the agreement with the Beacon of Hope. It's for, it's for action tonight. That's Dr. McLean.
Yes, this is coming back to you this evening. We shared it at our last board meeting in July, so it's back for action. It is the updated agreement with Beacon of Hope. We spoke last time about the many benefits, the partnership we have with the Beacon of Hope. And this is a new agreement that sees the Beacon of Hope as school officials. It streamlines some of the processes that we have with them and lays out how that partnership works.
So, this is for action tonight. Are there any board member questions or comments? And then what if, no, if there are none, then what's the board's pleasure? Move to approve, or? Ms. Morrison.
I move to approve the Lynchburg Beacon of Hope agreement and authorize the acting superintendent to sign the agreement.
Good. Been moved to the second. Any further discussion? Okay. Ready to vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Brings us now to Lynchburg City School Board Personnel Policies and Regulations. Mr. Copeland.
Yes, sir. At the end of the previous board meeting, we had a work session of some significant amount of time to look at this first package of personnel policies. The superintendent followed up quickly with you a few days afterward, saying that three, the policies related to reduction in force would be removed from that package. We've received no further questions inquiring about the rest of the stuff that we talked about that night. So, this is up tonight for action. If you have any other questions, I will gladly do my best to answer them right now, and hopefully we can get some of these new policies in place for the start of the school year.
Dr. Brennan?
Just bring up a question. In the work session, we had, there's that list of dated infectious diseases that I thought was going to be deleted, was the comment that was made during the session, but they're still there. They're on page 43, I think. I thought that Nora Dunn had said they were outdated and that section was going to be deleted.
Correct. They are actually in the policy that will be replaced. So, the essence of what we're trying to do is replace that old policy that has your list with the new policy that's on page 48.
So, I guess then this is, for a logistical question, what we received that we went through, I couldn't tell that was, how that was dated, the material, whether it was old or new. How are we supposed to know what was new, what was old, on what you gave us?
So, you've got electronic version or your paper version there?
Right. My electronic version, right.
Okay. If you go to the end of that policy, is policy 5-9.1. And if you go to the end of that policy, you'll see an adopted by school board date.
Uh-huh.
And that one was September 2nd, 1986.
Yeah. So, what, but it doesn't tell me it was revised or deleted. It was just said it was approved then.
Correct. It was approved on September 2nd, 1986. What we are doing is we are replacing 5-9.1 with JHCC. So, this, that old policy, as soon as you say approved, is gone, and we will just record it in record and keep it for historical purposes. But the new policy will take its place.
Right. As long as it's gone, it's fine. I don't understand how it's going away, but as long as you make it go away.
So, that's a good, a good point of reminder for those that haven't seen a few of these. When you look at the Table of Contents page, that first column is the column that lists the old policies, and that third column is the column that lists what its equivalent replacement would be.
Okay.
And anytime we're bringing an old one, we're hoping that there's a new one to replace it, or we're just flat out saying, this thing's so archaic, we want to delete it and be done with it. And there were several instances of that also.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Okay. And this is for action tonight. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the revised policies.
Okay. Second. Been moved in second. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. All right. It's gone. That brings us to item F5, School Board Governance, Norms and Protocols. These are the norms and protocols for us and how we behave in a professional, upright, thrifty, honorable manner. Is there any, any questions or comments or other guidance that we might take to improve, improve these? If not, this is for action tonight, and this is really us agreeing that we will follow these norms and protocols amongst ourselves. So, Dr. Brennan?
Every board member has probably read this multiple times the last couple of weeks. I'd like to move that they be approved.
Very good. Sir, a second?
A second.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Very good. Okay. We're going to have a special announcement here. Dr. Massey?
Thank you. I'm asking tonight that the Lynchburg City School Board approve Dr. Jeffrey S. Garrett as the EC Glass Principal. Dr. Garrett has more than 20 years of experience as a public educator. He currently serves as the Assistant Principal and Director of Athletics at Buckingham County Public Schools, where he combined his role in athletics with his position in administration to further develop students, programs, and facilities within his school. Prior to this post at Buckingham, he served as the Director of Career and Technical Education at Charlotte County Public Schools, as well as Assistant Principal post at Randolph-Henry and Appomattox High Schools, and Principal of Appomattox Middle School. His areas of focus in his career as a high school administrator have included communicating and promoting student learning through differentiated instruction. He has an appreciation for all the different ways in which students learn and become successful, and he has strong skills in the academics, the arts, athletics, and alternative career paths. His approach to education is appropriate fit to address the unique needs of the student population of EC Glass High School. Dr. Garrett has a doctor's degree in educational leadership from Virginia Commonwealth University, as well as advanced degrees in administration and supervision and curriculum and instruction from the University of Virginia. He obtained his bachelor's degree in health and physical education from Longwood College.
Very good. Looking forward to him hitting the ground running and embracing, embracing the EC Glass community. I know he will be embraced, hopefully positively.
Yes.
All right. That's, that's, that's a big step. So, thank you. All right. We can move to item G1, New Business. The School Board Finance Committee. The School Board Finance Committee, I'm going to skip here a little bit, meets quarterly or as needed in the school administration building. Membership includes the chairman as ex-official, as well as an alternate school board member. Memberships determined by the board chairman include the superintendent, chief financial officer, and three board members. Proposed membership for the committee include, includes Dr. James Coleman, Mr. Derek Polly, Ms. Katie Snyder, and Ms. Susan Morrison. These will serve from August 1st of this year through June 30th of 2018. There are a set of guidelines for the finance committee that appear as an attachment to this agenda item, and this is for action tonight. So, my recommendation is that we approve the previously mentioned membership of the school, School Board Finance Committee. Is there any discussion? Brennan? Is there a second? Ms. Morrison, second. Is there any further discussion? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Brings us to G2, Regulation, JFC-R, Standards of Student Conduct. Dr. McLean?
Yes. So, this evening, we're bringing to you for information, an update to the Student Code of Conduct, so JFC-R. It really is just intended, a single sentence that reflects House Bill 1709 that was passed that added a notification clause for students who are involved in an alleged incident of bullying. And that sentence for you on, it's section A4 within JFC-R, basically adds, "The principal shall notify the parent of any student involved in alleged incident of bullying," as defined herein of the status of any investigation within five school days of that allegation of bullying. So, it's really just reflecting the code and what we have for the Code of Conduct.
Questions? Comments? So, this addition then is really straight out of the code?
It is.
It's pretty straightforward?
Yes.
Okay. Is, is this a candidate for the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll put that on the consent, consent agenda for the next meeting. Well, brings us to item H, Superintendent's Comments. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, sir. I have an announcement to make. The Lynchburg City Schools registration will be Tuesday, August the 8th, except Bass Elementary School from 12:30 PM to 7:00 PM. And there'll be a back-to-school celebration on Saturday, August the 5th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Miller Park and Miller Center for all children and families of school-aged children. This event will include food, music, prizes, and helpful information to ensure you and your children start the school year off ready for success. And I would like to invite folks to the, announce that the convocation, Lynchburg City Schools convocation will be Monday, August the 7th, at 7:30 AM at EC Glass Cafeteria. Hope the board can come.
I'm planning on being there.
Well, we baited you at breakfast.
Yeah, I know you did. A little time limit, right? That brings us to Board Comments. Any board member comments? Ms. Carter?
I had the pleasure of being at the new teachers' breakfast, and just to see the enthusiasm in the room and to hear the speech from the Teacher of the Year was very encouraging. So, hopefully, well, not hopefully, we're off to a great new year and just wish every school division the best, every school the best, not division.
Ms. Snyder?
I just want to thank all the teachers and staff I've seen out there enjoying their summers off, but still working to let children in our district have opportunities, whether it was, you know, a pedal program or a camp, an art camp, a theater camp. Teachers who planted gardens at schools and allowed students to come in over the summer and do that. It was wonderful of them to donate their time and their time off and their rest to keep encouraging our students and keep them learning over the summer. And welcome back.
Thank you. Ms. Dr. Senna?
I'm grateful to have been able to attend new school board member training offered by the Virginia School Board Association in Richmond. It was a very educational day on Robert's Rules of Order and FOIA information and policy issues and things of that nature. So, it was very useful. And then the second day was a conference where we had a very inspiring talk by the Virginia Teacher of the Year, several really informative breakout sessions, and then a presentation by the governor. So, I was grateful to have gone and thankful for the opportunity and the resources that are provided to support us in our role as school board members.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Dr. Cole?
Very quickly, Mr. Chair, I want to give a shout-out to Diamond Hill Baptist Church, who had Gloria Preston and several others, a tremendous program to honor all of the graduates in their school. They gave one of our graduates $1,000 scholarship. It was tremendous, and the people there are doing a tremendous job. And I attended, one week later, at the same church, the Step With Links culminating program that Charli De Mason, board member Beck Mason, has been working with. And it was incredible to see the work they're doing with middle school students. I also would like to indicate that the VSB education piece was very helpful and forwarded reflections around that to you. I do want to say on behalf of Ethel Reeves, whose father departed this life, that it was so good to see persons who came out the night before and the day of. That was, was incredible. The breakfast for new teachers was outstanding. And I would like to finally say that I want to thank the board for your support of me as vice chair. And I pledge and commit my 100% support to our board chair, to work in harmony, to be supportive of him in ways he may need, and to help us, as all of us engage in doing the work that is before us.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Informational item. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, August 15th, 5:30 PM, and here in the boardroom in the school administration building. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.